I'm working Chris Kindelmichael out this month and then, uh, library board.
Like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigant.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen aldermen are present. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Phil Clay. Fire Chief Tom Corr. Finance Director Jamie Maitreit.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherri Salvatore.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belva.
Here.
Health and Housing Interim Director Jeff Heidorn.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here. Chief Clay's assistant chief ice cans here for Chief Clay. He's excused and who's the other one?
Tom Corr.
Tom Corr's excused and Deputy Fire Chief Bud Jacobs here in his place. So, ladies and gentlemen, this evening we have members of Boy Scout Troop Twelve from, I guess it's still from MG School, right? And I'm pretty familiar with this, that troop because I actually was scout master many years ago there. So, if, gentlemen, if you want to come forward and lead us in a pledge, they're here this evening to work on their citizenship and the community merit badge. Want to come forward, guys, and we'll stand who's able and join us in the pledge as soon as the guys are ready. Just right there, whenever you're ready.
Before we start, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the passing of former President Bush.
Very nice. Very thoughtful. Thank you. Thanks for being here and as I told you outside, for those of you who were there, if you have any questions at any time that either I or any other elected officials or the department heads can ever help you with as you're doing merit badges, we'll be glad to help because scouting's good for character, it's good for our community. Moving on, this time, we have no public hearing this evening. Let me go ahead and say we do have a few different visitors here. If we ever had to leave the, are we going to make you stand back there, Mike? You don't have a seat? It's scary when you make the new Democrat stand because they might, uh, if we find him a seat, guys. If we had to leave ever because of smoke or fire, heaven forbid, the police officers will certainly show you the two front door, the doors, but we'd ask that you carefully cross the street and we'd ask that you'd meet in front of the county courthouse sign so that we can kind of ask everybody if they, the people they were here with came out okay. If we had a storm, police will lead you across the lobby to the door right across from the counter of the city clerk and treasurer downstairs to an area that's a storm shelter in the basement. So, those are just some things to tuck away if you're ever here and need to do one of those two unfortunate quick actions. At this time, we have no public hearing, as I said, but we will open public participation in just a second. If you'd like to say something this evening, when I call on you, after you raise your hand, the microphone's right there, we'd ask that you give your name and keep the comments to two to three minutes and we'd like to be at something that's either on the agenda or city business. So, at this time, I open public participation. Is there anyone? Okay, hearing no one, yes, sir, you'd like to speak? Come forward and give your name, please.
How you doing? Christopher Davis. I live at 8009 West Main in Belleville. I'm calling in reference to the residence next door to me, 8001, that had a fire. First of all, I want to, the people that was displaced, I want to pray for them, first of all. I'm calling about because of the concern I have for the trees that overlap that building and the concern that I have with the safety. The, it's open, it's not closed in, kids use the bus stop there and for the, the people who use that, possibly would want to use that building for drug use or the people with thrill seekers who might want to go into that building. It's not safe, it's not boarded.
I'm happy to report to you that our building commissioner and our deputy fire chief in the beginning talked to some people. We've gotten, they have pulled a demolition permit last week, Friday, I think it was, and they should be, they should be, that building should be coming down any day. Now, you raise a good point. We had a conversation this morning with a few aldermen about the trees. We're going to ask and we're going to have, we're going to ask that maybe even our arborist that we use might go and take a look because if they deem to be unsafe for the neighboring houses, we will try to include that. But it's possible that the demolition, and maybe, guys, you can check for me tomorrow, it's possible that they're already included, but we were told they should be out there tearing that, the remains of that building that was left from that terrible fire. They should be out there possibly this week already.
Okay, I just want to leave you with, for years, I've been, about ten years, and for years I've been cleaning up debris from the winds blowing off trees limbs down. But I do want to thank the fire department for doing a great job.
They did a great job.
For saving my house and other residents around. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir, for coming, okay? Anyone else this evening? Hearing that, I'm going to close public participation. We're going to move on to the presentations and recognitions and the only, the only presentation we have tonight is I'm going to read that recognize the character word of the month is empathy and that's identifying and understanding others' feelings in order to get along better. And I guess probably no better month than the month of December to display some empathy for others during the Christmas holidays. It's probably a good, good character word as I know the scouts know about those. So, we move on now to the regular part of the meeting, the approval of the minutes. I'd ask for a motion if somebody's ready to receive and file the minutes from the November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen minutes. Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion about the minutes? Oh, and that included, oh, I'm sorry, that motion should also include your, my eyes didn't follow along, the, also should include the executive session minutes. Do you agree with that and you accept that?
Absolutely, as the motion is making.
So, everybody understand the motion, the minutes of that November nineteenth and the executive session minutes that you were given. All in favor of receiving and filing those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go on to the claims, payroll and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of four million one hundred nine thousand seven hundred nine dollars and seventeen cents and the payroll of eight hundred forty-two thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and six cents. Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pousa. Any discussion on the claims, payroll or disbursements? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oral reports, a motion, I'd ask for a motion, someone to consider from administration, motion to approve the two thousand nineteen committee and commissions calendar. This is something we're supposed to do now? Okay, so, it's basically what we approved in May, correct, for the fiscal year, but we're supposed to do it at the beginning of each calendar year also. Calendar year. Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Gah. Any questions? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, I'd ask for a motion to authorize the charitable transfer, scrap, discard or auction of miscellaneous city property located at several city buildings pursuant to section eleven dash seventy-six dash four of the Illinois Municipal Code sixty-five ILS, ILCS five eleven dash seventy-six dash four. You've probably all seen in your packet what this is. It's stuff that we've accumulated over a period of time, equipment, some furniture, there's some stuff that they were probably just going to be scrapping also or disregarding, trying to sell some of that at auction, working with a local situation. So, if there's no questions, I'd ask for someone to consider making that motion. Motion by Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any additional questions or comments? Roll call.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. One more coming from administration. I'd ask for a motion to approve a letter of understanding with IDOT regarding ADA updates for pedestrian traffic on North Belt West between Seventeenth Street and Frank Scott Parkway, no cost to the city. Motion by Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion regarding that motion? Roll call.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to zoning board of appeals. We have a number of cases. Is there any of these that you want pulled out?
Sir, could we consider addressing them all at the same time?
That's what I'm asking. If, is there any of them that you want pulled out? If not, we will address them all at the same time. Yes, sir?
On the, there's two that I want to go ahead and ask a couple of questions on. One is on the liquor license, eleven dash B, uh, six, and the second one is eleven dash B, three.
Let's, but you think you don't have a problem voting them together?
No, other than that, just questions.
Okay, so, let's do this. Let's, let's go ahead to put it on the, on the floor here. I'm going to ask that we would read these, okay? And then I'll ask after she reads them all, since you're willing to do that, we'll ask for a motion to read them and have the proper ordinances drawn, but then you, after she reads them, we can go ahead and do that, okay? Yes?
On the liquor license, eleven B six, after consultation with the city attorney, I'm going to just go on record as abstaining.
That would probably be best. So, let's go ahead and re, okay, let's, don't read eleven.
Eleven B six will be separate.
B six will separate, okay?
Just have a motion.
Yeah, to read them by title only.
It's a group, the others.
Is these titles, just, you want my title only here, this is here? Okay, so, first of all, do I have a motion to read these zoning board that are printed into tonight's agenda by title only and as a group, except for that one, one we talked about there, eleven six. Alderman Hazel, second by Alderman Schaefer. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Do you mind?
Nope. Eleven B one, sixty-nine, November eighteen, C. Richard Verne, a request for an area bulk variance to reduce drive aisle widths below the required minimum of twenty-five feet at twenty-five rural height center, zero eight zero eight zero two zero two zero zero four, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point five seven zero and one six two point four three nine, Ward three. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B two, seventy, November eighteen, C. Richard Verne, a request for a special use permit to operate three storage buildings at twenty-five rural height center, parcel number zero eight zero eight zero two zero two zero zero four, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five, Ward one. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B four, seventy-two, November eighteen, R. Church of Metro East, a request for a use variance to operate a church at nineteen thirteen North Belt East, parcel number zero eight two three zero three zero three, one six five, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable section of the zoning code one six two point five seven zero, Ward seven. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B five, seventy-three, November eighteen, Belleville Veterans of Foreign Wars, post seventeen thirty-nine, a request for a use variance to operate an assembly hall at three hundred North Charles Street, parcel number zero eight two two zero three one six zero three nine, located in A-one single-family residence district. Applicable sections of, section of the zoning code one six two point five seven zero, Ward two. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B seven, seventy-five, November eighteen, Wayne Herman, a request for a use variance to allow storage at twenty-one fourteen East B Street, parcel number zero eight two three zero one one zero zero eight nine, eight six, sorry, located in A-two two-family residence district. Applicable section of the zoning code one six two point five seven zero, Ward one. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval with the stipulation all storage is internal, vehicles on the property are licensed and buildings painted. Eleven B eight, seventy-six, November eighteen, City of Belleville zoning code amendment, a request for amendment of Title fifteen, land usage of the revised ordinances of the City of Belleville, Illinois, sections one six two point zero nine four, one six two point one zero nine, one six two point one two four, one six two point one three nine, one six two point one five four, one six two point one six nine, one six two point one eight three, one six two point one nine eight, one six two point two one four, one six two point two three three, one six two point two four eight, one six two point two six three, one six two point two seven eight, one six two point three zero eight, one six two point three two three, and one six two point three seven eight, special uses with the addition of personal solar energy system, PSES, and solar farm energy system, SFES. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven B nine, seventy-seven, November nineteen, Innovato Power Systems, a request for a special use permit for solar farm energy system, SFES, on a forty point four acre D-one light industrial zone, zone parcel, on State Route fifteen, zero eight three five zero four zero 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 one one. Applicable section of the zoning code one six two point zero nine four and one six two point four two eight. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Okay, so, we have a motion in a second to read these by title only and as a group. Do we have questions now?
Yes, sir. On item eleven B three, uh, it's going to be a multi-family dwelling. Is this an existing building or is it a new building? And if so, how many units or apartments would be in this multi-family building?
I'll defer to the property owner in regard to the number of units. However, the building currently does have apartments in it. What, what happened, though, is that it's a legal nonconformity. The apartments existed before the requirement for a special use permit in the C-two was established. What Mr. Verne is requesting is on the first floor, which had been office and commercial space, to now be able to convert those spaces into apartments to match the other two floors of the building, but.
How many units?
Four. He'll be adding four units onto the first floor, but the rest of the building already has apartments. He just wants to establish the remainder of the building to have the same.
So, how many units in total?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight, I'm sorry, it's a two-story building, correct. It's a two-story building, so he already has four, he'll be adding four on the first floor.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that, any other questions about the, the ones that Jenny read? If there's no other questions, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve those just read and to have them, the proper ordinances drawn.
I have one more.
One more question?
Yes, the liquor license.
We didn't read that one yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, just hang on here a second on that.
I make a motion, the request be granted.
That request be granted, have the proper ordinances drawn. Can you, a second? Motion by Pousa, second by Randall. Everybody understand the ones we're voting on here? All in favor of approving these recommendations from the zoning board as just read and discussed and have the proper ordinances drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Let's go back to that eleven B three, Jenny, no, I'm sorry, eleven B six, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, six.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Eleven B six, seventy-four, November eighteen, Mildred Raymond, House of Dogs, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license at nineteen twenty-six, West Main Street. Parcel number zero eight two zero zero four zero two zero zero three, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five, Ward two. Zoning board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only.
Okay.
The question I have on liquor license, what are going to be the hours of operation during the week and on the weekends?
For the liquor service? That's actually determined by the mayor.
That's to be determined once, this here is to establish if the zoning, strictly a zoning question. Now, that one I could have answered for you, we're, that will be discussed. He has to pass this hurdle and then I got to make sure my, my assistant, my deputy has all the background checks in and then the city attorney and I will have converse and I will set the hours. Okay? Answer that. So, do we have a motion then to go ahead and prove eleven B six, have the, have a motion and then to have the proper ordinance drawn? Motion by Schaefer, second by Steele. Any further, you're, and Mike, note that Alderman Bitner's abstaining. All in favor of having this item by the zoning board recommendation approved and have the proper ordinance drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We move on. Now, we go to communications. Need some water? Can we read them together?
Read them both.
Move forward.
Twelve A, General and Community Assistance Open House, January eleventh, twenty nineteen. The Office of General and Community Assistance to hold an open house in dedication of their newly renovated office on Friday, January eleventh, twenty nineteen, nine AM to eleven AM. Twelve B, ChiroMed winter luau five K route change, January nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Request from ChiroMed in the City of Belleville to change the five K route for Saturday, January nineteenth, twenty nineteen, due to construction. Route will proceed west on West Main to twenty eighth Street through Swansea, turning around at Catawba. Rolling Street closures with police personnel. Swansea Police Department notified of the change in route.
Do I hear a motion to approve those two communication? Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion on those two communication requests? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have no petitions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-three forty-one and thirty-three forty-two. Motion by Randall, second by Anthony, to read those two resolutions by title only. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-three forty-one, a resolution to approve the maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code with Illinois Department of Transportation and City of Belleville for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Fourteen B, resolution thirty-three forty-two, resolution approving plans and specifications relative to federal aid urban FAU nine two five seven North Belt West, section twenty-eight dash one, one twenty-two dash one, one twenty-two dash two, SW dash one, in the City of Belleville, St. Clair County, Illinois.
Do I hear a motion to approve those two resolutions? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Dittelman. Any discussions on those two resolutions? Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance eighty-two seventy-six, eighty-two seventy-seven, eighty-two seventy-eight, eighty-two seventy-nine, eighty-two eighty, eighty-two eighty-one, eighty-two eighty-two, eighty-two eighty-three, eighty-two eighty-four and ordinance number eighty-two eighty-five. Do I hear a motion to read those by title only and as a group? Alderman Pousa, second by Alderman Randall. Any discussion on that request? I'm sorry, we're going to, we can do separately if you need a request. Oh, he's going to abstain, I'm sorry. With that, you're right, we're going to ask that, um, that we hold in this group, ordinance eighty-two eighty-one and read that one separately, okay? Everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to read those, huh? Second by Randall. All in favor of reading by title only and as a group, except for that one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fifteen A, ordinance eighty-two seventy-six, twenty eighteen, zoning ordinance in regards to sixty-nine, November eighteen, C. Richard Verne. Fifteen B, ordinance eighty-two seventy-seven, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to seventy, November eighteen, C. Richard Verne. Fifteen C, ordinance eighty-two seventy-eight, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to seventy-one, November eighteen, C. Richard Verne. Fifteen G, Ordinance eighty-two eighty-two, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to seventy-five, November eighteen, Wayne Herman. Fifteen H, Ordinance eighty-two eighty-three, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to seventy-six, November eighteen, City of Belleville zoning code amendment. Fifteen I, Ordinance eighty-two eighty-four, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to seventy-seven, November nineteen, Innovative Power Systems. Fifteen J, Ordinance eighty-two eighty-five, twenty eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the sale and conversion of personal property.
Do I hear a motion to approve those ordinances as just read? Alderman Randall, second by Alderman Tyler. Discussion on those ordinances that were just read by the clerk. Roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go back now to ordinance number eighty-two eighty-one. Do I hear a motion to read that ordinance by title only? Motion by Schaefer, second by Dittelman. All in favor of reading eighty-two eighty-one by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Fifteen F, Ordinance eighty-two eighty-one, twenty eighteen, a zoning ordinance in regards to seventy-four, November eighteen, Mildred Raymond, House of Dogs.
If, yes, ma'am. We have, okay, if there's, we just got, Mr. Bitner wants to abstain. If there's no other questions, a motion to approve that ordinance, Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Gah. No further questions. Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Abstaining.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go on unfinished business? There's no unfinished business. I go on to Ms. Lee, it's a new business. Ask for a motion, yes, sir?
I've got something on the new business.
Okay, let's go ahead and take this vote and then we'll, I'll go to it. I'm asking for a motion to read the, approve the motor fuel claims, the amount of five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and fifty-three cents. Motion by Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Schaefer. Discussion on the motor fuel claims. Roll call.
Ovian.